If I could encourage everyone to take their seats, please. I never like to break up happy socializing, but it is time to call our meeting to order. I call to order the February 12th, 2019, meeting of the School Board of St. Lucie County, and extend warm welcomes to everyone here. It is really, really nice to hear all the happy chatter going on out there. So you're as happy to be here as we are, and we appreciate that you are here to share the evening with us. If you would join me, please, in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Kids at Hope Treasure Hunter pledge. As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. Thank you. You may be seated. Although I will ask my fellow board members to join me up front because the Westgate Schools has a performance for us tonight, under the direction of Zachary Mays. Oh, you want to -- okay. Excuse me, before we do that, sorry. Before we proceed to the performance.
Just want to make a brief presentation. The board has seen it, and so we'll go forward from here. But this is regarding -- this is for our public that watches on television. We are going to be going forward with a referendum on April the 23rd. I wanted to make a brief presentation. I know we have a lot of principals and APs that are out there, and so we just want to share what we're doing and why we're doing it. The first slide there talks about -- this is really about our students, our children, our teachers, our safety, and our future. Tonight, we're going to be recognizing our graduation rates and recognizing our high schools in that area. But as everyone's aware, we have no failing schools in St. Lucie County. We're in the top 10 in graduation rate. I'll also share about that every group of students, Hispanics, African-Americans, exception alleles, that were all in the top 10. 66% of our schools are A and B schools, and each one of our schools have their own success stories to tell. And that's really why we're going to the voters, because we cannot afford to lose any of our good instructors to surrounding counties or outside of the state as well. We also have our career and technical academies that we've been expanding, and almost 2,400 industry certifications where to prepare students to go right into the world of work. The ballot language itself is up on the screen right now, and this really talks about where the dollars would go for the salaries of teachers and support staff, recruit and retain highly qualified teachers, improve school security, improve mental health services, and at the very end, the funds would be reviewed by an independent citizens advisory committee. On the screen now lists really what Martin County and Palm Beach County recently passed. Twenty school districts in the last year went to the voters for some type of a referendum. In the area of operations, which is with salaries, Martin, Palm Beach County, Broward County, Miami-Dade County, Monroe County, and about seven others went to talk about teacher salaries. This is what will happen in Martin and Palm Beach County. With years of experience, you can see anywhere from $1,800 to $1,000 more a year. Six to nine would be $5,000, and 10-plus would be around $8,000 to $10,000. And we're not in a position to compete with that, and so we really need to go to our voters because it's highly competitive field, and the benefits to the students are really what we're all about and our effect on children. But we've got to have high-quality teachers in front of our students. Those are the beginning salaries as well, and we can see that we trail along on the Treasure Coast as well with Palm Beach County. We want to put a dent in that. Where would the dollars go? 70% would be for the increased teacher pay, 25% on school security. I'll talk about that in just a moment. 4% on mental health services, and 1% to preserve and fund important programs. The recruitment and the retaining of high-quality teachers, high-performing students need high-performing teachers. And when one of our teachers walks out the door that we've trained, that's an economic impact of around $10,000 to $15,000 for the recruitment we've done, for the training, certifications, those kinds of things. But more important than that is the impact that we would have on our student body when a teacher leaves that classroom. Talk to the principals. They hate to get that phone call sometimes in June, sometimes in July, where a superstar teacher, a high-performing teacher is leaving us, and how difficult that is to fill position, whether it happens in the summer or whether it would happen this spring. But the impact on students is so important, and we can't measure that. So we really want to keep our folks right here in front of our boys and girls and young people. With security, this is important. We want to have a, just as we have right now, a school resource officer on every campus. Sheriff Mascara stepped up after a year ago, almost today, with the Parkland massacre, and put officers in the elementary schools where we didn't have them before and some other facilities. And that expense, the county has been really putting in a lot of dollars into that program. And when this expanded, we received about $1.2 million from the state this year in funding for that. We contributed another, almost another million dollars. That was about $2 million that went towards that. But there was still a shortfall of around $5 million in this area, and the county commission stepped up and took on that for, really, for the one year, and we've had, really have to come up with some other alternatives. But it's important, and I know it's important to this board, that we do not want any of our employees armed. We don't want armed, we don't want our teachers armed, we don't want our employees armed. We want to have a school resource officer that's trained on our campuses to protect our students. They also develop great relationships with the students, and it's just a fantastic partnership. Improve mental health. The board is aware of the issues, and the mental health issues, and the social-emotional issues that the boys and girls bring to us. Our youngest children, not just, it's not just in the secondary schools, it's with our youngest boys and girls. And our teachers are not equipped to do this. I say the first and best teachers should be the parents. That's not always the case for all of our children, and we kind of step into that gap and not only teach them the academics, but teach what we call the total child. So if we're successful with this, we can get some more additional counselors, psychologists, social workers, behavioral support staff, those to work with the needs of our young folks. And then preserve important programs. This is a minor. There would be 1% put here, but this would be for any areas in the district that we think, let's say I see Port St. Lucie High School here tonight, let's say we needed an additional carpentry teacher there because of the expansion of that program. We're going to be hearing in just a moment from the students at Westgate. Let's say we have a great music program at one of the schools and we need an additional music teacher, or we need an additional this or that in whatever school center, this would give us that opportunity. Every dollar staged right here in St. Lucie County. The accountability is written in the ballot language, where there would be a citizens advisory committee that would review all expenditures. State law dictates that we can only spend the money for the intended purposes. Our board members are directly accountable to the voters when they're up for reelection, and then this would be for four years, and voter approval would be required for any type of a renewal. This will be unique, that it will be a mail-in election only, which really gives us the widest opportunity for the public to have a voice in funding our schools. For special elections, which this would be, you always have a very, very low turnout in around the 10% range. We want to make sure that we have the most participation that we could have from our community and from our registered voters to have a say in the future of our public schools. Since it is a mail-in ballot, the ballots will go out on April 3rd. We will be doing extensive campaigning as far as getting information out to our public, not only to be registered to vote, but as well as to answer questions. We plan on doing at least four of our town hall meetings. We're looking right now at the beginning of March for that, to be at Lincoln Park Academy, to be at Central, to be at Centennial, and to be at Port St. Lucie High School. Some of those principals are hearing that for the first time right now, but I'm sure they'll accommodate us when we come out. And we also have our outside political action committee. The chair of that will be Sheriff Ken Mascara, who is very supportive. We have a great partnership, and it's the hashtag for our kids. The address is on the screen. Anyone that wants to support this cause and then support that political action committee should contact that group or mail any kind of check into them, and the checks can be at any amount as well for that. So I appreciate the board giving me the opportunity here before the young kids come up here. But this is really about our children, our teachers, our safety, and the future of our district, and I appreciate the board allowing me to just take a couple of moments here to present this. And again, we look forward to going out into the community, answering questions, educating our community about this need to have high-quality teachers in front of our boys and girls and our young people, have safe schools, mental health services, and preserve important programs. And this will all be overseen by an independent group, outside group of citizens, that'll make sure that every penny goes to where we say it will go. Thank you. That being said, I'll call up Dr. Perry. Correct? Or who? You want me to introduce them? This is the chorus coming up here from Westgate, right? Westgate K8. Come on up. Board members, come on down.
While the students are walking away, any parents, friends, faculty, staff from Westgate, if you would stand so that we can applaud you for having such a fabulous group here tonight. Youngsters, we thank you very, very much, and you are a prime example of the reason that we are so adamant to go forth for this millage rate, because programs like this have to continue to exist, and we have to have talented teachers such as Mr. Mays in front of these children day after day. So thank you, Mr. Mays. Thank your students. We appreciate very much you being here tonight. We'll just proceed right into our special orders of business, board members, while we're down on the floor.
Chairman Hawley, board members, Superintendent Gent. Ready, willing, able, and capable of rallying troops to help fundraise for St. Lucie Public Schools. This describes a very, very special lady that we have had the honor and the privilege to work with over the years. So at this time, please let me introduce you, please come up, to Mrs. Sheila Cash. She represents the great business partner that we have for the school board, Garber Buick GMC, and with her this evening is Mr. Steve Ward, the executive general manager, and he is the one who makes it possible for her to support our schools in such a fantastic manner. Through the focused efforts of Mrs. Cash, and many, many of our schools have reaped great benefits from the Garber Drive for Education fundraiser. All totaled nearly $40,000 has been raised to support extracurricular programs, academic endeavors, and performing arts competitions, just to name a few. Thank you so much to Ms. Cash and Garber Buick GMC. And now we'll continue our celebrations of success among our schools with some information about the 2017-2018 St. Lucie Public School graduation rate.
Just to share briefly, we're going to recognize our school centers, but again, for the general public. We have an overall rate of about 92%, 91.8%. You're doing your taxes right now. You always go upwards and average it out higher, so it's 92%. This is a four-year trend, going from 75.5% to 91.8%. When I talked a few moments ago about, you know, a lot of the positive things and points of pride, this is certainly one of them. If we look at all of our children, our economically disadvantaged students, almost 91.5%, almost 10% higher than the state average Hispanic students, fifth in the state at 92.5%, 7% higher than the state. ELL students, 82%, 7% higher than the state, sixth in the state as well. This is one of those slow screens. ESC students, almost 87%, 10% higher than the state average. African-American students, 90%, 9% higher than the state average, and white students at 92.4% or 3.4% higher than the state average. Every group of students, and this is very important, every group of students is outperforming the state, and we continue to be on the rise in all of those areas. This shows our schools, and this shows our trends since 2014-15. If you look in the yellow column, you can see the increases. Central High School, 15%. Westwood High School, an incredible 28%. Lincoln Park Academy has always been at 100% or 99%. PSL High School at 97, a 26% increase. Centennial High School, about, not over 97, 15% increase. Treasure Coast, 98.1%, 15% increase, and as a district, a 16% increase over the last four years. And you can look at the 91.8% compared to the state ranking. And I believe that's it. With our comprehensive high schools, and we're going to recognize everyone tonight. With just our six comprehensive high schools, the graduation rate is 96.5%. And out of the tri-county area, there's 11 high schools, comprehensive high schools. We take the first five places of that as well. So now we get an opportunity to recognize the teams that are responsible for that, and I'll turn it back over to Carrie.
And that is absolutely correct. It is a team effort in order to reach these very high goals. So we're going to start this evening by asking that Dale Casson's Educational Complex, please come forward. Thank you. We definitely care for one another. We care for our students and provide a wonderful nurturing environment that is individualized, sometimes online. We have Mosaic Digital Academy coming forward, please. Providing for each child every day and making sure that we have the never-give-up attitude, we have Performance-Based Preparatory Academy, which has seen many, many children move forward to success. Thank you very much, Performance-Based. St. Lucie County is a wonderful place to live, grow, learn, and play. So I now invite my alma mater, Fort Pierce Central High School. One of our three unique schools that have the opportunity to launch STEM-focused education, Fort Pierce Westwood High School, please come forward. Congratulations, Westwood. Next, we would like to recognize Lincoln Park Academy. It is one of our premier high schools, and it also has a middle school attached to it. It is a 6 through 12 school. Congratulations. And next, we bring up a high school to celebrate the graduation rate, as well as a fantastic drama department that recently entertained many, many in our community, Port St. Lucie High School. And continuing with our recognition of success, we bring up the Mighty Eagles. St. Lucie West Centennial High West Centennial High School. And the grand finale of our awards tonight, we have the Mighty Titans, Titan Born, Titan Bread, Treasure Coast High School. Congratulations to all of our high schools. The momentum is definitely moving forward in a fantastic rate. So, we're going to continue that with our PBIS awards, and Mr. Bill Tomlinson is coming forward to share how our momentum is moving in the right direction in regard to our positive learning environments.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent Gent, Mrs. Green and I would like to thank you for this opportunity to recognize the 25 schools in the district that have obtained distinction as PBIS model schools for the 17-18 school year. Each year, the University of Florida's Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports Project recognizes schools throughout the state that have achieved model school status by demonstrating innovative, creative, and functional ways to support PBIS school-wide. We would also like to thank our wonderful group of school psychologists and student services support staff who serve as coaches and technical assistants for this project. It is my pleasure to introduce to you tonight Robin Vanover, the Technical Assistant Specialist with Florida's PBIS Project with the University of South Florida, and Robert O'Neil, our school psychologist and PBIS coordinator, who will inform us of the schools that have reached this distinction as PBIS model schools for the 17-18 school year. As the names of the schools are called, we ask that the schools and their delegates please move forward to the front for a photo. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tomlinson and Ms. Green. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. It's very exciting to work with the St. Lucy County Schools. They're so energetic and so driven and dedicated, and they are one of my seven counties, and they probably keep me busy more than most. But it's always a pleasure. We had a great summer with lots of training and lots of consultation that took place. PBIS is in about its 20th year of research and validating its outcomes throughout the country. Florida is one of the states that is leading the way with lots of that research and has lots of those positive outcomes. To date, so far, 1,969 schools have been trained in Tier One throughout Florida. That's quite a few, and about 26,000 across the United States and internationally as well. So, tonight we're recognizing model schools, and what happens with model schools is their implementation is at such a level of fidelity that they are producing positive outcomes as measured by their office discipline referrals and their out-of-school suspensions. So, at the bronze level, they cannot have more than a 15% increase of office discipline referrals or out-of-school suspensions for more than one year only. Most of these schools tonight have not even reached near that. They're either trending around the same or declining from year to year. To reach silver level status, you have to demonstrate the same outcomes for two years, and to receive gold status, you have to have those outcomes in addition to demonstrating equitable outcomes among all of our subgroups. You cannot have a risk ratio higher than 3.5. So, tonight, with that said, we're going to recognize the St. Lucy schools. There are 334 across the state of Florida for the 17-18 school year, so we will start with bronze. Can you read that? Mr. O'Neil is going to read those schools, and we'll ask the bronze schools to come up, please.
Thank you. Just a couple of words. I was listening to the graduation rates, and I thought about our program as well. Over the last four years, we've gone, I believe, from eight to 16 to 23 to 25. So, like our district, we continue to go up as model schools. Bronze schools for 17-18 include Rivers Edge Elementary School and Windmill Point Elementary School.
Oh, and they got their shirts on, aren't they? Looking snazzy. Rise. Do you see that one back there? Isn't that nice? One big one. Okay. The superintendent says one big picture, so silver, silver schools.
Silver schools include Fair Lawn Elementary School, Forest Grove Middle School, Francis K. Sweet Elementary School, Lawnwood Elementary School, Samuel S. Gaines Academy of Engineering Technology, St. Lucy West K-8 School, and Weatherby Elementary School.
Congratulations. Might have to use those stairs, too. Oh, he's gonna do... Because the next group is so big, probably. You ready? Okay, and now we're ready to announce the gold model schools.
All right, here I go. Alapata Flats, K-8, Bay Shore Elementary School, Chester A. Moore Elementary School, Point, I'm sorry, excuse me, here we go, we're back. Palm Point, Educational Research School at Tradition, Floresta Elementary School, Manatee Academy, K-8, Mariposa Elementary School, Morningside Elementary School, Northport K-8 School, Okamic K-8 School, Parkway Elementary School, Savannah Ridge Elementary School, Southern Elks Middle School, Southport Middle School, Village Green Environmental Studies School, and Westgate K-8 School. Thank you.
Congratulations.
I invite Dr. Kevin Perry to the podium, who will discuss African-American History Month.
Chairman Harley, Board Members, and Superintendent Gent, the precursor of Black History Month was created in 1926 when historian Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History announced the second week of February as Negro History Week. From the event's initial phase, primary emphasis was placed on encouraging the coordinated teaching of the history of African-Americans. Negro History Week was met with an enthusiastic response and grew into popularity throughout the following decades, with mayors across the United States endorsing it as a holiday. The first celebration of Black History Month took place at Kent State University one year later in 1970. Six years later, Black History Month was being celebrated all across the country in educational institutions, both grade and small, when President Gerald Ford recognized Black History Month during the celebration of the United States Bicentennial. He urged Americans to seize the opportunity to honor the too太多 neglected accomplishments of African-Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history. The contributions of African-Americans to the development of this great country are woven into its fabric. St. Lucy Public Schools joins with districts all across this great nation to proclaim February as African-American History Month. Here to present the proclamation for your approval is the very proud Principal of Samuel S. Gaines Academy of Emerging Technologies, Mr. Keith Davis.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Gent. I bring the proclamation for National African-American History Month, February 2019. Whereas, the St. Lucy County School Board takes pride in joining Americans throughout the country and various parts of the world and recognizing February 2019 as National African-American History Month. And whereas, African-American history celebrates the contributions that African-Americans have made to American history, and whereas, National African-American History Month had its origin in 1915 and was initiated in 1936 by Dr. Carter G. Woodson as Black History Week, as it coincides with the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Francis Wallace, two key figures in the history of African-Americans. And whereas, in 1976, this commemoration of Black History Month in the United States was expanded to Black History and in 1986. President Reagan proclaimed that the foremost purpose of Black History Month is to make all Americans aware of the struggle for freedom and equal opportunity, and deepens our understanding of our nation's history. And whereas, in 1994 and 2002, the Florida Legislature passed legislation to ensure that African-American history content is taught in schools. St. Lucy Public Schools continue to take the necessary steps toward the infusion of African and African-American history curriculum as part of the content taught and studied pre-K through grades 12. And whereas, this year's theme, Black Migrations, emphasizes the movement of people of African descent to new destinations, and laterally to new social realities. While inclusive of earlier centuries, this theme focuses especially on the 20th century through today. Such migrations resulted in a more diverse and stratified interracial and intraracial urban population amid changing social ambience such as the emergence of both black industrial workers and black entrepreneurs. The growing number and variety of urban churches and new religion, new music forms like ragtime, blues, and jazz, the blossoming of visual and literary arts, as in New York, Washington DC, Chicago, and in Paris in the 1910s and 1920s. The theme Black Migration equally lends itself to explorations of the centuries later decades from spatial and social perspectives with attention to health and environment, civil rights, and protest activism, electoral politics, and dynamic cultural and production. And whereas, it is appropriate to call upon our schools and the community to observe this month, with programs, activities, ceremonies, and our school board to recognize and promote these observances district-wide. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of St. Lucy County do hereby proclaim February 2019 as African-American History Month and adopt it this 12th day of February 2019. Thank you.
It is now time for our STAR Award for this month. The STAR Program focuses on recognizing stellar service from our employees for their behaviors, skills, and actions that correlate with the district's core values. I invite Mr. Alberto Diaz, representing the district's maintenance team, to please come forward. Mr. Diaz is an electrician who so impressed Bay Shore Elementary by his professionalism and attention to detail that the school's principal called and wrote to express their sincere appreciation for making certain that all systems are go and all equipment is working as it should to ensure safe and caring learning environments for all students and staff. Thank you so much, Mr. Diaz.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. And just, Board members, to bring to your attention, item 17 is informational reports. They require no action from us, but I encourage all of us to be sure to stay on top of those reports each month. Mr. Superintendent, your report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of issues to cover. Number one, we were in the parade a couple of weeks ago. It was a very chilly day, and we want to congratulate St. Lucy West K-8 for the judge's trophy for overall creativity and participation in the elementary category. First place was Morningside, second was St. Lucy Elementary, and third was CA Moore. The K-8 category, first was Samuel Gaines Academy of Emerging Technologies, second place was Northport, K-8, and third was Creative Arts Academy at Cast. The middle school level, first was Forest Grove, second was Southern Oaks Middle, and third was Dan McCarty. At the high schools, first place was Westwood, second place was Central, and third place LPA. Week of Kindness, the first place was Morningside Elementary, the second place was Windmill Point Elementary, the third place was Palm Point Research School and Tradition, and a certificate of appreciation went to F.K. Sweet. I want to just take a moment. We just had our Night of the Stars the other evening, and I want to congratulate our Teacher of the Year, Makita Broom from Westwood High School, and the, let's see, the Employee of the Year, Dorothy Hall from CA Moore, and the Distinguished Minority Educator, Sabrina Finell from Westgate K-8, and the outstanding first-year teacher, Emily Utz from Fort Pierce Central High School. And I want to read this because I don't want to miss anybody, but that was quite an undertaking that evening. We've already signed up the Master and Mistress of Ceremonies for next year. They were free on that date, and we're anticipating another musical. Where is Dr. Perry? Did he already sneak out? Oh, he has a class. There he is. So, thanks for agreeing to do that, Dr. Perry. And Ms. Whitaker is here also. Thank you, both of you. Let's stand up. They did a fantastic job. Thank you. Thank you. I thought it was a brilliant idea, whoever thought of that, to put those two together and to do that. So, we'll continue that tradition. And also, I want to thank the following folks. The Night of the Stars Committee members, the Night of the Stars Selection Committee, LPA Administration, faculty and staff, the LPA Student Engineers, Media Services, Publications, Child Nutrition Services Catering Staff, they do that on the side now, and that was excellent, and Facilities Maintenance, SLPS Student Performers, again, Jane and Kevin as the EMCs. Again, fantastic job by everybody. And Carrie, you forgot to put your name in here and include yourself and your team for the job that you did. So, a job well done, and I want to thank you for that effort. And then, for Tools for Teachers, this is on CBS 12. They came this past couple of weeks ago to Alapata Flats, right here, and surprised teacher Nicole Cook. So, she got $312 for classroom resources. We encourage parents to nominate teachers for that award and to get those schools recognized and to get a couple of dollars on the side as well. That completes my remarks this evening.
Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Harold, do you have a report?
No item, thank you.
Thank you. We will then move to our School Board Member Reports. We do have an action item. As you all know, the millage has been approved by the Board of County Commissioners, so we are moving forward with that upon our vote tonight. So, I would entertain a motion to adopt the referendum. Thank you, Ms. Hinsley. Thank you, Dr. Mills. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries unanimously. And we will have Board Member Reports. Ms. Hinsley, would you start?
Yes, ma'am. We have a multi-county work group, and we had a member of the State Board of Education who joined us. We, I guess, we emphasized our priorities. We did not change our legislative priorities, but we had a very, very good dialogue with him, and I think we will continue with that. I got to have the privilege of spending some time in Tallahassee with the Florida Children's Council. It is a small group of people, but department heads come and speak to us, and I don't know how productive it was, but it was some very interesting dialogue.
Yes, I was able to do part of the manufacturing boot camp tour Lucia put together, and it was amazing. We went to Radical Cosmetics, which I honestly didn't realize that it existed, large warehouse in downtown area of Fort Pierce. And what I did learn in looking and recruiting students, it's really important, the information that I think the people that went on this trip learned, the majority went on a bus, teachers that work with different trades in the schools. And the owner of the facility said, "It's the soft skills we look for, but we can teach students who have a good attitude and have a good work ethic." So, as much as we... It is important that our students learn the computers and the technical. What he was really looking for was electrical engineers. He had equipment that was sitting there that wasn't even out of the boxes because he didn't have people that could do the automated work. So, it was fascinating to me. He had three years of back orders waiting for him. So, as fast as we can get our students to him, hopefully, it'll be a win-win situation for any of our students that are looking into manufacturing-type work. And I was so appreciative to see firsthand the growth and opportunity for our students in St. Lucy County, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hilsen. Dr. Mills?
I just want to say thank you for such a wonderful evening with Night of the Stars as well as even this evening. It was really exciting to see us moving and just by leaps and bounds, making progress. I was absolutely amazed at the acknowledgement of the gold level tonight for student behavior and how many schools we had to represent each of the levels. But it was overwhelming to see so many schools making gold in our students' behavior area. Also, want to thank Westwood High School, I mean, Westwood K-8 for their student performance. I enjoyed the song that was sung tonight, led by Mr. Zachary Mays. And want to recognize also Sheila Cash from Buick, Garbutt Buick, for your effort and the rest of your team to be supportive of St. Lucy County Schools, public schools. The high school graduation rate is phenomenal, and we appreciate all of the hard work that everybody is putting forward because it takes a lot of work to get to where we've gotten as a district, and appreciate that. Want to give our kudos to Superintendent Gent for his work and his efforts as well and all of our administration in place. And last but not least, just thank you for what you do every single day in our school district and with our kids. We couldn't do it without you, and you're doing a fantastic job, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Ingersoll?
Yes, ma'am. We're just completing Literacy Week a couple of weeks ago, and I want to thank everyone that invited us to come and read. Also, we also did student-led conferences, and I was at Village Green Elementary, and we were on tornado warning, and we had to shut the school down with all the parents there. And I really appreciate Mr. Davis and the Resource Officer and everyone jumping in and pitching in and just being concerned, not only just for the child, but also for the parents and the community members in our community. And it was a great relationship between the Resource Officer and our administration, along with Brian Ruthler, you know, communicating to the school, too. So, it was just really great to see how the school operated, and everyone pitched in from his staff to, you know, support staff, teachers, and everything. And it gets pretty hot in the hallways when you've got all those bodies in there, let me tell you. That was like 30, 40 minutes, Terry. It was a long time. I kept on saying, "Man, this is going to take forever." But you can never put time on nature, and I just appreciate the love and concern for our administration to our, not only just our children, but to the whole community. So, it was a great, great time and a great learning experience for me.
Thank you. I, too, have had the privilege of reading in classes and student-led conferences, and I know we have more coming up with SUSE Day right around the corner. We're looking forward to that. There is just so much to celebrate about St. Lucy Public Schools, and it's all because of you and what you do each and every day. So, thank you for continuing to carry the banner and continuing to do the good work and helping our students rise. We have no unscheduled speakers that I'm aware of, so we are adjourned.